Good evening, everybody. Listen, first of all, I just want to say, I know it's January, and I know that plenty of people in Australia are still trying to work out, do they have to go back to work, and they're, you know, come off holidays. You're recuperating from catching up with the family, you do that once a year. But I am wrapped with the turnout here tonight. And I want to just say, many of you won't know each other tonight, but we've called people in the local area. I don't mind your politics. Anyone here is welcome. There'll be people here who might, you know, think the whole system needs to be ripped up. There'll be others who say we shouldn't touch anything with the system. But everyone here is welcome. This is my sixth January as opposition leader. And whilst I wouldn't wish opposition leader on my worst enemy, although I think, except for the government, perhaps, people would say. The point about it is character building. You get out and you hear what people are doing. So I just want to thank you all for coming and making some time to share your views, to see what the fuss is about. Some of you might never have voted Labor in your life here. Some of you might have always voted Labor. Some of you might not vote for anyone, you know, you're just sort of, you're only because you always get a politician at the end of it. For whatever reason why you are here, I am still grateful. So thank you very much. I want to acknowledge the traditional owners of the land upon which we meet. I pay my respects to elders both past and present. And when I do that, I don't do it out of some sort of ceremonial sort of feel-good thing. It's a bit more, it's fundamental. We in Australia are the lucky country. Doesn't always feel lucky, and not everyone's doing as well as everybody else. But we are very fortunate in Australia compared to many other parts of the world. We are the only country who are the custodians of an entire continent. You think about it, all around the world, we are lucky, at least in that regard. And one of the reasons why we are lucky is because we share Australia where people have been here for 65,000 years continuously. So when I do it, I do it out of respect. Because if you don't respect your history, then you're lost when it comes to the future. Having acknowledged our traditional owners, I also want to acknowledge the candidates we have here. Senator Chisholm, who represents this part of Queensland in the Senate. We've got Zach Beers from Flynn, that is the electorate immediately to the north and the west of Bundaberg. And we've got Richard Pascoe, who'd like to become the new member for Hinckley. And he'll do a good job if he gets that chance. I should also say, even though he was the sort of, on the other side politically, I always thought, I always found in my own dealings with Paul Neville, he was a gentleman, and, you know, he's passed away, and that's a very tough time for his family. But unlike some of you in the current government, you could, you know, talk to him about an issue, and he didn't see it as a term of ideology, he was just more interested in what worked. So I acknowledge his passing, he was a good man. But now it comes to all of us here. Two points I want to make. I've got two aims out of tonight. One aim is that you get to understand some of the policies which we are presenting to the people of Australia in about 16 or 17 weeks when the election's going to be called. The other thing I want you to do is get a better understanding of me. Not because some of you haven't met me before, not because I haven't been here, but the biggest single comment I got over the summer, there was a dead heat. The two biggest comments I got over summer, when Chloe and I were on holiday with the kids, and just as I travelled around, one comment is, and I get it from people who might be diehard Labor or diehard LNP, they come up to me and say, "We're sick of the instability." I had a very nice older gentleman, he said, "I don't vote for you guys, this time around I might give you a vote," but he said, "I just want someone to be Prime Minister continuously for three years, and then let the people decide." Now, Labor's done the wrong thing in the past year too. We've played the games, and we've been guilty of instability, but I think objectively, the fact that this is my sixth January as opposition leader shows we have learned our lesson. In other words, we've actually warped the talk. So people are sick of the instability, you know. I have literally, I didn't quite believe it till I spoke to some friends of mine who are paramedics. They used to ask suspected concussion cases, you know, a series of questions, to make sure that they were, that they were sort of got their zero back in. And quite literally, a question I used to ask is, "Do you know who the Prime Minister is?" Now, they don't ask the concussion victims, though. And whilst that sort of has a humour of slavery, it does show that people, and I'm not disrespecting the current fellow, I'm just making the point, that people, you know, we're a very lucky country, as I said. But somewhere along the line, our political system doesn't keep pace with some of the parts of the Australian people. We've got a lot to do, times are not easy. And that's the other comment I've come to. One, stability. And two, the other comment which I've heard equally much is this sense that everything is going up, except your wages. Everything is going up, except your wages. Now, this leads to a deeper challenge. This country works best when there is opportunity for all. And the best way to deliver opportunity for all is to provide a fair go-for-all. Now, these are nice sentiments. But what I want to do tonight, in the course of our question and answer, is explore Labor's fair-go plan. See, I think in this country, one of the secrets to our success is what postcode you live in, or how wealthy you are, shouldn't be the predictor of one's success. What religion you worship, what gender you are. What should be a predictor of one's, you know, progress in our community is do you pay your taxes? Are you a good neighbour? Are you a good parent? Do you participate in your community? I think every Australian, doesn't matter if it's in Bundaberg, or Burnie in Northern Tassie, you should have access to good health. Your kids should have access to good quality education. So our big challenge at the moment is, I think a lot of people are dissatisfied with the system. Not just the stability, but your power prices are up. That is a fact. The cost of childcare, up 20% since the coalition came in. Record low wages growth. We have a situation where private health insurance is in danger of becoming a luxury item. And I bet many of you here probably don't even have it, because it just gets too expensive. Yet we give them $6 billion a year in subsidy. So you've got to ask yourself, how can something go up 55% in prices over 10 years when it's getting a $6 billion subsidy from the government every year? This is a challenge. There is a sense that not everything's equal. Oxfam, the charitable agency, put out a report today. Not for tonight's gathering here, but nonetheless, it's interesting. The top 1% in Australia have about 70%, according to the CEO of Oxfam. Or our 160 billionaires, and good luck to them, are making $100 million every day. Now, that, you know, people doing well, that's okay. My critics and some in the conservative media like to say that when I complain that inequality is rising, that makes you a fast warrior, it doesn't. But what it does do is it makes me determined to make sure that every Australian, the pensioners, the farmers, the small businesses, the pay-as-you-go taxpayers, that you don't get left behind. So when we talk about this election coming up, we're happy to have a big argument. Do you want better schools? Or do you want bigger multi-nationals? Do you want better hospitals? Or do you want better loopholes for tax concessions? These are the debates we're going to have. But now, let's hand it over to you, like, as Senator Chisholm said. If you could, we'll do three questions, it doesn't have to be a question. My experience even in Bundaberg is you're not short of an opinion or 10. So if you've, you know, you've got a view, provided you don't take forever to say it. And if it's exactly repeating what your best friend, three people down, not wearing the same t-shirt as you said, you know, just before, probably one topic each question would be handy. But you're welcome to state your view, provided it's courteous. I would reply the same. I don't expect you all to agree everything I say tonight. I don't expect agreeing that everyone here thinks. If we did, that would be, somebody wouldn't be right. But I'm interested. I appreciate your coming tonight, and I really look forward to a great discussion over the next hour. So thank you very much. You do us great.
All right, so the last two are just to show their hands, and we'll take the first three questions. So we'll start one in the front here. We've got a raving microphone coming around. Yeah, so we've got a raving microphone there. If you could, everyone could just start with their first name and maybe where they're from.
My name is Margot, I live here in Bundaberg, but I'm representing my friends Priya and Nardis, and their two Australian-born daughters, Kopika and Faniaka.
Can I ask you to speak up a bit, sorry?
I represent Priya and Nardis, and their Australian-born daughters, Kopika and Faniaka, my little granddaughters from Billawheela. I'd just like to ask Mr Shaw, if he would take this briefing note that we put forward here in regards to factual information contradicting the claims that the Minister for Home Affairs is staging surrounding the case of the local Billawheela family.
I'll repeat the question too, so you make sure you're here. It's about the Billawheela family, who are currently in litigation about their stay here.
And also highlights issues with the fast-track refugee determination, determination system. So if I could just get this to Mr.
Other questions, if you might have looked over this side of the room. You have Lady Stenmore there?
My name's Sue, I live in Bundaberg. This is my husband, he's just retired from working in the electricity industry. Yeah, 47 years. Now, we don't expect anything from Centreland, so we're just letting off money what we've got in the bank, but they said we will be able in September. Now, we've sort of gone to a financial advisor to help us and all that, but healthcare is one, and we will not be able to afford to keep it up. And I feel that we will have to pull out, and that will put more pressure on the public system.
And we'll have one more, is there anyone yet? The lady up the back there.
Thank you. Mary Walsh from Our Voice Australia, just seeking a commitment from the federal Labor government that they will continue to fund, as needed, Australia's workshops for people with disabilities. Currently, we here have like 4,000 people unemployed. And to put another 500, 600 people with pretty profound intellectual disability into that workforce is not, is not practical. And as you know, Bill, I've been representing these people before Fair Work for the last three years. And Fair Work currently have reserved their decision, but it will be a new tool, not the one that the ACTU and the rights movement wanted. Thanks.
Thanks, Mary. What I wouldn't mind doing is getting you to, you and I know some of the language you're using, but for people who are not familiar, could Mary get the microphone back? And just explain, we use the word tool and the Fair Work, just what's been happening? Because this is really interesting.
Thank you, Bill. Here we have the old sheltered workshops are what was set up. They're called supported employment. That's their real term. There is a movement out there, been there for a long time, to do a work of supported employment, which is seen as segregated employment. And to have all of these people employed in mainstream business. Which is a wonderful ideal, and I as a mother would applaud that. So where we're at is that the issue went to the Fair Work Commission three years ago. They're currently involved in looking at the existing tool. They've come back with a hybrid between what is and what the ACTU and the rights movement wanted. What the ACTU and the rights movement wanted would have shut our workshops because they work on their NGOs, their businesses designed around people, not out there to make money. So wage tool is what will determine what happens to Australia's workshops for Australian disability enterprises into the future. We would all love to see them out there working in our private enterprise. But here, that won't work. And we need both levels of government, whoever they are, to accept there is a place for supported employment. That place will be determined by what the Fair Work determine the future tool will be, and whether or not the future Australian government will actually fund it.
Is that covered, Bill?
Yeah, yeah, great, it's a question, Mary. All right, thanks for those first three questions. Margot was talking about, can you all hear me up the back? Margot was talking about that well-documented case of that Sri Lankan family who the Billawheela community's really embraced. They've got a, they're seeking the ability to stay in Australia, and I think they've got over 100,000 signatures of support. And the local, that's not just people in Melvynston, that's the local community in Billawheela, and no doubt some of you have read about it. Now, they're currently using the legal process. The government is not in favour of granting them the status they seek. I understand the lawyers for the family have filed an application to seek special leave in the High Court last Friday. So I don't want to necessarily get the judges offside. I didn't convince them too much on citizenship, so. So that's got to proceed. But you go to a couple of, if you like, strong policy points. Labor at our national conference, we actually have our national conference publicly every three years, talk through the ideas, it's quite a jamboree, we've got through it. Anyway, we announced that, and it was partly informed by the Billawheela community and what I've seen in central and northern Queensland. I get that we can't take everyone in the world who wants to come here, and we're not going to. And we're not going to allow the people smugglers back into business, no matter how much bad-tempered ministers in the current government dog-whistle to criminal syndicates in Indonesia and say, "Try your hand in Australia." You know, I think that's just shameful conduct by Dutton and the crew. But it is what it is. But what I do say to you, though, is that we should always be able to take some people to this country. We've got to do it in an orderly way. They've got to be people who are good people, we get all of that, pass all the security checks. But one idea we've come up with, and it's inspired by the generosity of Queensland, is watching what I've seen in Billawheela. Is we want to create community-based, sponsored refugee spots. In other words, if the community wants someone, and they've gone through it, and they've checked them out, well, that's not a bad way to absorb someone in. So we've said that, and I've been a bit inspired by the struggle in Billawheela, to say, well, you know, there are country towns who want a workforce, who happen to bring in good people, and who work hard and build, you know, build an area which might otherwise be aging, mightn't have enough people in it, or whatever. So we don't agree, we don't like the fast-track approach used by the current government, and we are open to having community-based sponsored visas where a community brings people in. See, that's the beauty of this arrangement. I'm not going to tell Billawheela who they should and shouldn't have. I'm hoping to let the community make that decision. And I think that way we actually take some of the sting out of the whole debate. All of us, other than the first Australians came from somewhere else. Anyone who comes here should obey our laws, pay our taxes, you know, do all of the things, and, you know, bring their kids up and make sure they get taught English, and do all of that. But we're also the country of the second chance. So whilst, so long as we're not reckless about it, we should have a structured program that brings some people to this country. Not more than we can take in our cities, not more than crowds our infrastructure. We work it through with the experts. But someone gave most of our ancestors a chance. I accept the British legal system, we sent my convict ancestor. They gave them a chance to come here. But I think we can get it right. I did this whole immigration debate, you know, we can't overcrowd it. We want to make sure we maintain our wildlife. I don't buy the argument that we have to be totally ruthless and exploit a few people just to score some votes on the margin. We're smarter and better than that, we've got bigger hearts. Sue was raising the issue that a better heart, or the other heart, has just stepped down from working in the electrical industry for 47 years. Probably paid private health insurance for a lot of that time. Paid all the taxes, and now this private health insurance is getting more and more expensive. You know, I look back and look at the privatization of Medibank Private, and I don't know if that was the idea which it was promised to be. I am conservative in the last decade. We've seen the number of exclusions in policies go up and up and up. We've seen the number of people in private health insurance being forced out because of premium increases. Little bit of good news is if we get elected, we've told the private health insurers, and the big three, Goof, we're a Medibank, and NIB, that we want to cap their fee rises. We don't want them being able to just increase the prices each year. This is one of these areas where the minister has the power to authorize what the increase is or not. So under the current government, it's gone up 27%. We have said that if a Labor administration is elected on May 11th or May 18, we are going to cap fee increases at no more than 2% for two years. I mean, once you, I understand running health businesses are expensive, and I understand that there's special costs which go on there. So what we will do is we tell the private health insurers, "You can't increase your fees above 2%," is that we will sit down with them and the rest of the industry to work out where we can save money and make it more efficient. I'm not going to get rid of private health insurance, that's what some try and say. We're not. I think it's good if there's incentive for people where they have the ability to save for a bit of their own healthcare, they do. But if they're getting a $6 billion subsidy from the federal government, from the taxpayer, then I want to see more responsiveness from them on prices. Now, the government says this is warfare on business. How dare I interfere with the ability of big companies to make profits? I'm not interfering with their ability to make profits. But when you're getting $6 billion of taxpayer money, I want more for my money than we're currently getting with 27% increases over the last five years. So hang on till May, and then make a decision. Mary raised the issue of Australian disability enterprises. There are, and maybe some of you have a family member with profound or severe disability, but there are some people whose impairment means they're with the best will in the world, they can't work in open employment. That's correct, isn't it? And they were sheltered workshops, a lot of them were started by charities. Endeavour does a good job, and my wife was on the board of Endeavour for a while, I got to see what they do. But there's a lot of smaller outfits who've started by families. It's not easy to financially constitute these, because it's great for the people with a disability to go along and work, and socialize, and not be at home, and be with colleagues. But some people's impairment means literally, you can't say that it's open employment. But one of the debates has been that some of the wages paid to people with profound and severe impairment is so low. There's been what they call tools or rewards, where they take, they assess you, and you have a certain proportion of an open employable person, and you just get paid that fraction of it. That's probably, it's probably the Prime Minister saying, "Please come along." It turns up everywhere else I go on Australia. I ain't blocking, too, it's a free country. But in all seriousness, for the disability employment operation, so you've got this tension. You want people to be paid properly. On the other hand, you've got a financial model of people who are not able to, in some cases, work in open employment, et cetera. Where do you, how do you make sure that they still have a viable operation where they're getting something and they get that? And it's not an easy balance. And I'm sympathetic to rights, people say pay people more. Now, we'll see what the Fair Work Commission does, but at the core of the problem you're describing, Mary, it's not whether or not the, you know, the disability enterprise wants to employ someone on a fraction of a full wage because the person's impaired, or the rights advocate who says people have dignity and they should get paid a full wage. It's that we don't fund disability properly in this country. So it's almost like a hunger game. If you give insufficient money, then you get to these invidious choices. So what we did was we set up a national disability insurance scheme, and we lost office. See, what I have is a view, it's like this, and I'll do a quick survey in a moment with you. Just because someone has a profound or severe impairment, that's not their whole personality, that's just an aspect of it. And what we've never done in this country properly is fund disability properly. Because actually, if you fund people with disability and carers properly, and you have a look at the whole person, not just their impairment, in the long run, that's actually more cost-effective than this crisis-like system where if you can no longer look after this child you love, then they go to the front of a queue for a house or accommodation. But basically, we've had a system which has been dysfunctional and rewarded mistakes in the system. And even tonight in Bundaberg, I am sure, there will be carers and parents in their 70s and 80s, her 90s. Well, that's obviously not you, but you know, you know, there'll be people looking after an adult child with profound disability. And the thing which keeps them up at night is worrying who's going to look after them when they can't. So what I promise you, Mary, what I promise you, and we've privately chatted in the past, is a Labor government, if we get in, will get the NGOs back on track. But I made an announcement today, and I realize it has value for you, and it has value for your disability enterprise. The Commonwealth of Australia is the biggest, you know, one of the biggest contract letters in the nation. We let contracts of about $50 billion every year, $50 billion. What we announced at Maryborough is that if the contract that is being bid for doesn't have local jobs in it, then you're not going to get the contract. We want Commonwealth taxpayer money spent in the area. And that is often good value as well, because someone said, "Oh, shouldn't it be lowest price?" Well, as you know, cheapest does not always equal good value. Especially you've got to do the rework and the new, and the fix-ups. But what I'll do, Mary, and you and I'll chat, and I've got Anthony here, is we'll make sure that this procurement policy has a very clear filter. The way you got a disability enterprise, formerly known as a sheltered workshop, but disability enterprise, I want to make sure you're getting some Commonwealth contracts to do work. Because, you know, I just think, if the Commonwealth's got to pay for this person with a disability, I'd rather they were going to a workplace in a social situation, having some dignity, than just being stuck at home and ignored. So we'll work together. We can put more money in the system, then that's a rising tide which lifts all boats, doesn't it, Mary? Yeah, and we'll, we won't let you down. People with disabilities can't always vote, although plenty can. But I just made the point, but the rest of us can. And I want to do this quick survey. How many people here have a family member or know a family member with someone who has a profound or severe disability? Show your hands. Just pause for a second, keep your hands up. And I just want the people at the front to have a look at the back. That is a big number. So when people say that disability doesn't matter, I'll tell them to come and have a look at the show of hands here in Bundaberg. Your family matters, the carers matter. And this is why I will have a fight with the government, and the real estate industry, and the private health insurers, and the vested interests. Because I'd rather find money for pensioners and carers and people with disability than give another tax concession to a BHP who forgot to pay $300 million today.
Three more questions, we've got now three from this side. So we've got a young lady at the front here. If I could just ask you to wait for the microphone, it's coming behind.
Is that good?
Sorry, I'll be quicker.
You touched earlier on how lucky we are to be in Australia and how we're responsible for such a large continent, which I think also includes our responsibility to the environment and to climate change. If the Adani Mine extracts its gold peak of 60 million tonnes of coal per year, the average emissions from burning that coal is 120 million tonnes of CO2, more than the annual emissions of many countries. What do you plan to do to oppose this mine going ahead?
Hi, Bill. Question of the question I'd like to ask is if Labor is to get elected, will you scrap the cash reserve card? Or will you at least, you voted against it coming into this region, you did the disallowance for Calguli. Would you be able to guarantee that the end dates will be, the end dates for the trial period set down? Or at least try and get this sorted out? Because I've got people across this country that are really desperate to know. Is Labor going to stand up for our human rights, our economic, civil rights, and our freedoms as citizens? Or see us all blended as second-class druggies, addicts, everything like that? Because you've got a large population of parents. In the other states, you've got parents caring for disabled children that are on the indignity of this card. We saw in the media globally this weekend, a sole parent, or not a sole parent, but a parent with five children stranded on the side of the road because the card declined. She couldn't get a formula, she couldn't get a map, she had to drive 60 kilometres to get to town. And the car broke down trying to get home. And that's just one out of thousands and thousands of issues with this card. We live in a country that is desolate, isolated, you know. These regions are isolated. And if somebody breaks down in the temperatures that we have and has no access to go to rehab for a mechanic, what happens? And this could have been tragic for a handicapped baby that was in that car. And this card removes dignity, it stigmatizes not only the people that are in it, but the whole region that the card is in. And seriously, I hear the real life of people on the card. People on my team are on this card, right? People with partners working, that are caring for disabled children, they're caring for elderly people, they are on disability support pensions. This region was not started off that way. But still, the indignity for parents, whether you're single, whether you're coupled, whether there's working in the house or not, it applies to working people too. Because people that have got part-time work can't get enough hours to get off the system, and they end up being entrapped further, but more dependent on it-do under the control of the company. Can you give us a commitment, please, Bill? On behalf of what could be 12,300 people in next month, we are still Australian citizens, and all we ask is to be equal, please.
We'll break it to, I'll go to a fourth question as well, so we'll go to the gentleman in the green.
My name's Steve, I'm local at Bagara. This is just an off-the-cup follower to your statements about disability. This is just an off-the-cuff follower to your statements about disability because that brings it home for me, but also I just want to go a bit further with the disability. So what I'm asking is with disability now, we have a situation where if you have a family where one member of the family is working and they're on a borderline wage, you're all of a sudden income, but that member is putting in enough to disallow the second member of the family from being on any type of government assistance payment. And that family member needs to care for another family member who is, who has a disability and can't look after themselves. That family member can't afford to do that and then that family member ends up in a system. Now, I understand the need for business, for homes and business looking after people who can't be otherwise looked after, but at the moment, the system is broken. Because at the moment, we have private organisations just going for a support payment, but they're really doing nothing. And the person who needs help is not getting the help they need. When there's a family member there willing to do it, but they can't afford to do it because they've got to go out and look for a job, because otherwise they can't afford to support their kids. So the first thing I want to know is, is there a way to bring this back? I understand we need to support business because the business needs to be there for the situations where there isn't a family member. But can we bring it back to the days of old where there is a government system that helps support the family members who can support their family members? And more widespread, this is also an issue with every single payment and with every single service where privatisation is taking up about every single service and I think that needs to stop and I think we need to go back to, seriously, who here doesn't think the old CES system didn't work better?
And we'll go to the gentleman in the green at the back there.
Thank you, yeah, Mike Moller from White Bay Bennett Environment Council and good to see you here, Bill.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, I'd like to thank firstly the young lady down the front that asked a question about Adani because that's me asking it. So I'll ask another one. It's in relation to federal environmental legislation, perhaps looking at revamping the current Environmental Protection and Biodiversity and Conservation Act, which is not a bad act, but as you probably well understand, the current federal government is just not interested in enforcing it and is taking a huge amount of time to assessments on things like threatened species plans, mainly because they've sacked about 60 people in that department. And that's starting to lead to the Environment and Conservation movement, thinking about a federally, you know, Environmental Protection Agency. So I just wonder what federal Labor's views are on upgrading federal environmental legislation and perhaps looking at a federal Environmental Protection Agency. Thank you.
Thanks very much. I didn't catch your name at the start. Sarah, okay. Listen, on Adani, I'm a sceptic of it. We will wait till we see if it stacks up scientifically, environmentally and commercially. They've missed a lot of deadlines and now the Queensland Government's having a review of one of their standards. So I'm a sceptic of it. Also, initially, they started off saying they were going to create 10,000 jobs, now they're going to, they say they'll create 1,000 jobs. So Labor is not waiting federally, and we've said no taxpayer money should be used in it at all, full stop. And even, I think, the coalition's sort of come to that position, but I don't know. You go to a couple of other issues about climate change and you go to issues about coal. Coal is still going to be part of Australia's export mix and we use it as part of our energy mix and that will continue for the foreseeable future. But what I'm not prepared to do is just say business as usual is the way forward. The fact of the matter is renewable energy is getting cheaper all the time. The fact of the matter is that we need to take action on climate change. I mean, the current occupant of the job of Prime Minister goes to Fiji and he even got a telling off by that leader about it. The reality though is Australian people are so far ahead of the current government when it comes to climate change and renewable energy, it's not funny. So my government's going to be fed income on renewable energy. What we also see is it has a consumer benefit and a jobs benefit. So as I said, there'll be still some coal mining going on and they'll still be part of our energy mix, but I'm certainly not going to put all our eggs in that basket. You look at, I was, even as we're driving through Childers today, I was having a look out the window of the bus and amazing how many houses have solar on the rooftop and businesses. Two million Australian households have moved to solar. And I, you know, the current government gets itself tied up in knots. The current Prime Minister brought in a lump of coal like show and tell time, he was brandishing that like a lucky charm. You know, just some crazy stuff. I see Australian business and Australian consumers moving to renewables every week. So we've come up with a policy where we want to see a lot more Australian households have access to solar batteries. I think the batteries is the sweet spot. Now, I don't believe in miracle cures, but I think that if you can get that energy during the daytime when the sun's shining and be able to use it in the evening when you do the washing, the kids are on the computer, you know, when you, when you need it, the batteries is a game changer. I think we are at a tipping point in the Australian political debate. Renewable energy combined with storage and speak to the people who want to do pumped hydro up and down the east coast, the old mine sites being rehabbed to be able to store more energy through pumped hydro. We are at a tipping point in the nation. For 10 years, this nation has been gridlocked on climate change. The current government still is gridlocked on climate change. You know, I think, I think if Malcolm Turnbull's prone to self-reflection, that's an if, he might have realised he should have taken on some of the hard ride of his party and said back to his own, what he said with his own instincts. We'd have had to work with him on a national energy guarantee, but he didn't. And now what happens is, I predict in this election campaign coming up, the government will try and scare you about Labor, but they'll never talk about climate because they can't. Because as soon as you do, there's some conservative LNP with a big shepherd's cook drags you off stage and puts someone else in, in your place. But I think we are at the tipping point. As the technology gets cheaper, as we've broken the back of the question of storage and Australian scientists are the best in the world and we have the best resources in the world, both wind and solar, I think consumers are just going to vote with their feet. That's why I'm very excited, and I haven't gone to all of our policies on climate, that if a vote for a Labor government nationally means that you improve the chances of getting solar batteries in your house, I reckon that's interesting. Because I actually don't underestimate Queenslanders and I don't underestimate Australians. I think a lot of Australians would like to do something on climate change, but they worry about the cost. And the government's played on that fear quite successfully at times. But when you have a lot of these batteries, you know, I don't own a share in a battery company by the way, but it's just, it is, it seems to me that it joins that last sort of missing dot, doesn't it? Links the last missing dots in the debate. So we are going to be bullish on climate change. We have got a goal of 50% renewables by 2030. I want Australia to be a modern country. And by modern, I don't mean dispensed with our values and dispensed with, you know, what's made us a great country, but I want us to look at the future and not be scared of the future. Because the status quo isn't working. To be honest, if we don't win the next election, heaven knows what's going to happen on energy prices. Because people are not investing in new electricity generation. I know you've got national party MPs travelling the country when they can get their head out of their own particular turmoil, saying, oh, no, they're going to build coal stations as far as the eye can see. That's not true. The expense of building from the start, whole brand-new coal stations, I'm not talking extending the life of existing ones, but the expense of building, ground-up, whole new platforms, you're being sold a false bill of goods. So I think we should back the science, I think we should back what is going to be the cheapest technology, I think we should also back this fundamental proposition of Australian politics. Indeed, it's a proposition which I think, even though many of you I don't know, I meet for the first time tonight, but I suggest to you, it's a common DNA of all of us, whatever our politics, we want to hand on a better deal to our kids and our grandkids. That doesn't just mean the family home, that means the family continent and that means climate change. Now, the next two questions, and Steve, yours, I think, also had some specifics, so Senator Chisholm just had a quiet word in my ear, said, we're happy to get the details and understand those specific examples, but you were making a couple of general points, I thought, which need to be addressed. Most people I've met, now, there might be a few, but most people I've met don't want a handout from the government, there are some. And mind you, there are plenty in Collin Street and Pitt Street. Big business loves a handout from the government and maybe there are some people unemployed who do too. But the vast bulk of people, if you're on the age pension, you're on it because of your age. If you're on the veteran's pension, you're on it because you are a veteran. If you're on the carer's pension, you're on it because you are a carer. If you're on the disability pension, 99% of the time, it's because you have a permanent impairment. But that does not make you a second-class Australian. What I fundamentally believe is that this, that we've been guilty for the last few years of trying to make people who receive a Centrelink payment feel ashamed of themselves. Now, what I want to put to you is that we shouldn't be privatising Centrelink, we shouldn't be contracting out the coal centres. If you've got a great, I've got great friends, a lovely lady lives down the road, she's the best baker in the world, best baker in the world, but she's got diabetes and she's, one leg's come off, she's a very proud lady. But she is made to feel worthless when she has to wait for hours to correct Centrelink details which are sent out to her. This is not right. So we will put more permanent jobs back into Centrelink, we want to put more people back into administering the system so that people who have to use it don't make them feel like they're second-class. The other point which you were driving back at was with disability in particular, we want to make sure that people with disability have a say in their lives, that's why we will address the NDIS and I mentioned that in link with Mary's question. But there was the second question which was asked about the card. Now, I did a press conference and some of our friends here from the local media, you'd be pleased to know, asked exactly the same question. Pritz. You were passionate more, but you were definitely more passionate. It was the same question. And what I've said is that we can't stop the rollout, but we did vote against it. I kept my word, I think it was in August, at 27am we were here, and you sort of said, will you keep your word? We did. We said we'd look at the evidence and if we didn't like the evidence, we'd vote against it and we did. And I think we arranged for your group to come and speak to the Senate Select Committee and we did. I can't unscramble the egg of what this government does, but what we can do if elected is we will do what we can to roll it back because we don't support it. The case hasn't been made to spend 13.5 million dollars on a new scheme when that money could go better to help people in other ways to find work and help with addiction. Just on balance, too many people have seen problems with it for you to be ignored. If it was just one or two people, well, then maybe it's one or two people. Some people swear by this cashless welfare card and I've met some of them in other communities. But the more that I see and the more that I meet, this idea of treating some Australians as children, as not competent, that's not the Australian way. So we will do everything we can, once we are elected, with the proviso, I can't unscramble what they get wrong between now and May the 11th. So that's a direct answer. Mike, yeah, we are interested in upgrading the federal environmental legislation. We had that debate at our national conference, the conference did support that. We think that we need stronger federal environmental legislation, we will consult with all parties, but we're not going to just come into government and be a rubber stamp of the status quo. We think it does need to be stronger, species are threatened, we don't think actually there's enough certainty for business even either. So stronger environmental legislation with, which is well-resourced with a proper agency, we think will be a net enhancement for all sides of the debate. I have to make this point in the last two questions and we'll get over to more questions. I'm outraged that this parliament is only going to meet 10 days before the next election. I'm outraged the Senate will only meet for seven days. There's so much going on from the environment to welfare to jobs. I cannot believe we live in a country where the government of the day won't actually attend the parliament. They may be the government, but when you don't attend parliament, you are not in government. And I want to say today, and I'm going to say it all the way to when parliament resumes, I find this current government fundamentally disrespectful of hard-working Australians when they ask you to go to work every day, they punish you if you don't go to work. And if they don't have the confidence to turn up to work, well, they should hand in the keys and let someone else who wants to do the job, do the job. Four questions over this side, we might start with the lady down the back, Joey, just behind you, with the hand up.
Thank you. I guess we all get concerned about exploitation and people are the ones we first met here about communication and exploitation. I'd like to ask Labor about what they're doing about exploitation that happens in live export and your attitudes about animal welfare.
Yes, we've got the gentleman there in the green shirt.
Uh, Mike, Mike, okay, my name's Steve, I come from Bagara. Um, I'm, I tell you now, I'm a rusted-on latest quarter since I've been 18 years old. But I, when Hawke and Keating were in power, they said to us, get into superannuation. I worked in an industry that gave me a chance to have superannuation. When Keating became Prime Minister, he allowed us to put more money into my superannuation. I've got an industry-based superannuation. I also bought shares because, they said, buy shares because when you eventually retire, this government, or this country, may not be able to support me and my family. So I did this and as you can tell, I'm not, I wasn't born in this country, but believe you me, I love this country. So don't hold that against me. Especially if it's cricket. So anyway, so now I've come to the situation where I've been retired for the last six years, a quarter of the money I live on comes from the tax I get back from my shares. Now, you have taken that away from me. I have never asked for a pension or anything from the government, so I am not entitled to be grandfathered. So I'm going to lose this money. I know I'm only one of 240,000 people in this country who will lose it, but I do think that's harsh that you can change something that many guardians of the Labor Party, Keating, put together and you come along and change it. I just don't think it's slightly fair, but I can't do anything about it. Do you think there is a, you know, I don't understand how we, in 75 or 76, we were allowed to do something. Now I've come to this age after, I've worked all my life, yes, I worked in the coal industry, which I think is a marvellous industry for my life. And people don't realise the amount of money that coal companies and coal unions put into their towns and into Queensland is amazing. But anyway, that's, you know, so my question to you Bill is, do you think it is?
What are you going to do and get it? Thanks, Steve. We have a, we might go to the lady in the middle and then we'll come down the gentleman. Oh, you're doing fine, Rita.
Hello, my name's Rita Triony. Rita Triony, um, Australian, Australian parents and my husband and me, so sorry.
Sorry, hold it uncomfortably close to your mouth, it works, sir.
I'm the founder of White Bay Bricklet, we did a manufacturing company here in Bundaberg, we're going to $84 million. It was donated eighty-four million dollars. And we can't bake brick.
Now, I don't, don't think it should be huge in this shop. Still, I was going to put it in. Like you with the camera cock light.
We have a meeting with the Labor Government Committee, question, uh, and with the camera. Uh, they mentioned that Andrew Thorne, that White Bay Bricklet should be looked into. And we had a meeting with the Labor Department, they thought it was going to happen past UAN. Obviously, um, because of this, uh, and he said he was going to, uh, complete that, any documents we wanted. And we were going to have a mediator, uh, to review our case. I always said he didn't know anything about banking. And I don't think he's a right person to judge him, to judge him anyway. Uh, just something that, something that went out, that throw bank victims because, um, we didn't... So much problem and this is being fraud and corruption going on. And it's to be stopped, the registration, the credit control. But somehow, a future generation has got this role in doing it, which is part of the control.
Thank you, Rita.
Thanks, Rita.
My name's Steve, so I'm Stephen. And, uh, it's like my stand, not the shirt, front of your bill. So you can see the shirt. It does say Vote Labor, but it's also got a deeper meaning because, uh, directly relates to the union's current Change the Rules campaign. This one says SAC, Howard, because it dates back to two thousand and seven when the, uh, unions had the Euro to Work campaign against Howard's work choices. And we know how successful that was. And Kevin Rudd was elected on the back of that campaign. Now, I've no doubt you and your team will be elected, uh, in the power, for sure. But with the union's Change the Rules campaign, I also have no doubt it'll be in greater numbers. And we'll swing a lot of voters to Labor with our union campaign. So Kevin unfortunately tinkered around the edges with the workplace relations and the changes to work, uh, working conditions and wages. We want some sort of commitment from you or, you know, I want to know, if you're not going to tinker around the edges, you're going to do something significant to give us better wages and conditions, fair wages and conditions, and fairer industrial relations.
All right. Thank you. Um, I, the lady who was talking about the, uh, live, uh, sheep trade, I just didn't catch your first name.
Oh, God, and it's live export, I suppose.
No, I heard you say live export. I'm, yeah, okay, Ron. Uh, the question was about, what are we going to do about the live export trade, uh, trades, cattle, sheep? Uh, we've said, and so I've got, I get some, I've got some good news and some not good news from your perspective. When it comes to the live cattle trade going to Indonesia, we aren't going to close that down. Uh, so far we have been, and not even so far, we are satisfied that this two-and-a-half-billion-dollar industry, uh, seems to get the message. But we will make sure that we have very strong monitoring. Uh, and that we also want to create a separate, independent inspector general. We don't want the department who deals with the trade regulating it. We think that that should be a separate body. Having said that, on live sheep, I probably, you, you find this part of my answer much more satisfactory. This industry is about quarter of a billion dollars and whilst people in there and you've got cartage contractors and you've got, uh, some growers, you know, that's important to them. This is an industry which despite the best efforts, has not improved its game. Now, I know there's a debate where some people are saying that filming the cruelty somehow and paying for the film of the cruelty somehow undermines, uh, the animal justice people. Filming cruelty and being paid for filming cruelty, uh, paying for that film does not make cruelty any less cruel. I, I, I think that debate is missing the, the wood for the trees, if you know what I mean. We would said on the summer trade, where it goes right across the Indian Ocean, it should just stop. And we would stop it straight away. We've said that the whole trade should be phased out over five years and there should be support given to the people who earn their livelihoods in this trade to change the nature of their business to processing here. I just think as a nation, as a general principle, we need to be better at, if you like, value-adding here in Australia than simply being a quarry and just shipping it off all overseas. So when it comes to live sheep, we've been very clear, there's a clear point of difference between us and the government. And, uh, what's happening though is that over time, it is not actually honest to tell the live sheep trade that you can keep going the way you are. Because sooner or later, there will be another incident. And when that happens, the reaction of the Australian people will be enormous and deafening. Anyway, we've decided that we should see this industry transitioned out of over five years and we think that the summer trade should be stopped immediately. And we will provide support and work with the industry to help those affected by that decision to be able to transition to new forms of business. Um, Steve on shares, this is a vexed issue, uh, and I can see what you're saying. When I say it's a vexed issue though, there are definitely two sides to this. Uh, I'd, I'd love to talk to you offline as well to understand your financial circumstances. Because what happens is we get, I can state a general principle, then the question is, well, I've got, these are my arrangements. And I don't know all of your arrangements. Uh, so therefore, by the nature of what you're seeking, it'd be better for me to chat to you offline. But we'll go to the general principles we're discussing. In nineteen eighty-seven, uh, Hawke and Keating introduced a system of frank credits whereby if you own shares in a company, uh, and the company pays company tax and then the company pays you a dividend or a, you know, a payment each year for owning the shares, that you could offset the amount paid by the company in tax against your own income tax. So you're not paying double tax. In two thousand, and we're not changing that, but in two thousand and one, so it hasn't been around since Captain Cook turned up on the Endeavour. In two thousand and one, um, Costello and Howard had rivers of gold coming from mining revenue. And what they actually said is that you can get a refund on your dividend for tax paid by the company, even if you haven't paid any tax yourself in that year. So we are the only country in the world who gives you a tax refund for not paying tax. Now, I do understand, and I'm not dismissive of the concerns. That's why I want to talk to you to understand your circumstances. Because I've got one mouth and two ears and I generally do more listening than talking. So I do want to talk to you, Steve, and I see the point you're making. You come from a good industry. But this nation can't keep giving people tax refunds when they haven't paid tax. It's actually, that's a payment from the government. So when people say they're not getting anything from the government, actually you are. It's just not a means-tested payment. Now, having said that, you constructed your finances. So you want to make sure that, uh, you understand if there's changes in laws going forward, that you want to understand how they work. So I am keen to talk to you and understand what you're saying. But the principle of giving people a tax refund for tax they haven't paid in that year, like, it's nice, but it's not sustainable. And my problem is that I've got a whole set of questions. How do I pay for my childcare for the, uh, for all the preschools? How do I make sure the hundred and twenty-seven thousand people on aged care waiting lists get that reduced? How do I make sure we can decrease the out-of-pocket cost if you're diagnosed with a serious disease? So there are no easy choices. But what I've got to do also is make sure that we can afford to pay for what we do. And therefore, again, it's, do we want to be the country who has the most generous tax refund when you haven't paid tax? Or do we want a country who's got the best healthcare system? But not easy choices, especially if you're an individual who's worked hard your whole life, you've retired and, you know, you've got a set set of arrangements and you hope this, this is a government payment though. That's the one thing I will say. You hope this government payment will keep coming. So we'll just work it through. We're not going to rush in. We'll listen, we'll talk. Because, uh, anyone who's been a coal miner, I respect. And that's why I made the point about the industry. I'll make something, a point though, for workers coming through in the future. Why is it corporate profits are up thirteen and a half percent and wages are moving two percent? See, there's more than one way to help preserve for your retirement. And I want to get wages moving in this country again. But thanks for your question. I'll look forward to chatting to you at the end if you care to stay around. Um, now Rita raised, uh, an issue which I think, uh, is a very difficult issue. And I'm not sure everyone heard every word you said. And I won't paraphrase everything you said. But Rita and her husband worked hard to create a brick business in Wide Bay, you said. Good business, big business. Well, but it made money. Lot of investment, though, lot of hard work. But it sounds like the NAB, N-A-B, I've got the hate when I say that, anyway, NAB, uh, let you down. And I, I wouldn't just casually pick that example out, except everywhere I've travelled in Australia, if I had a gold coin, people said they've had trouble with the banks, well then I'd have a lot of gold coins. We pushed for the Banking Royal Commission. Maybe we should have pushed for it years and years ago. Probably should have. But when Malcolm Turnbull got up at Westpac on their hundred-ninety-ninth birthday and said, oh, my ancestor was one of your first customers and hundred-ninety-nine years on, you'd been naughty. Um, that was the day we moved. We said, well, all right, we think you've been naughty too. We'll give you a royal commission. And they fought us for two years, the LNP. And in Parliament, that was when we were lucky enough to have the government turn up for a quick, brief fleeting appearance. Um, they got up actually most recently, said, we called the royal commission. All the laughter was funny on our side, you know. You can see their fingernail marks in the concrete. The current prime minister voted twenty-six times against it. Now it's his idea. Well, fair enough. You know, that's fair enough. Um, you, I don't, you get the right answer. I don't care how you work it out. Uh, fear could be a reason. Uh, so I am sorry about what's happened here. We wanted to have a longer royal commission. But the report handed down on February the first, my shadow treasurer, Chris Bowen, put out a statement today. He said the government should not sit on the report and work out how to craft it for maximum political benefit in the short term. Put the report out. Now, I'm going to be very interested in some of the questions it goes to. We will not, uh, give up on this issue. Now, the banks are, uh, now tightening up their lending. That's what's causing challenges to getting money at the moment. It's almost, you know, they, they said, oh, well, you're giving us a hard time, so we'll clamp down on lending. And I'm seeing businesses perhaps who should get a loan, not. So I just want the banks to understand, I'm not anti-bank. I'm pro-customer though. And I just feel, Rita, and having now met people, and sometimes I hadn't realised how great the pressure was. But now, you know, you talk about your husband passing. And I have to say, I've met now so many people. And rather view the banks as automatically somewhere up in a pedestal. They're just another business. And they don't deserve any more respect. They're an important part of our economy. I want them to be secure. But I will never accept the proposition that the only way that our banking sector can be profitable is by being unethical. That isn't the way it deals. The Australian taxpayer stood behind the banks in the global financial crisis. We guaranteed their security. And as a result, they took a greater share of the mortgage market after that. So I'm, you know, I haven't been through what you've been through. But the banks have thrown a lot of stuff at us over the years when we want to reform financial advice. I'm sorry that we didn't listen earlier. But I tell you, for the last two years, I couldn't be prouder of my Labor opposition that we're the ones who made the Banking Royal Commission happen. Us and you. And I promise you, actually, Rita, that once we've got the recommendations, my candidates will have a chat to you directly. And you can tell us what you think and they'll pass that on to me. Thank you very much, Rita. What was your first name? Steve? There's one more Steve and then we'll go to a couple of other questions. Um, Steve asked the question about workplace relations. Now, he said that perhaps the O-seven-to-thirteen government didn't do enough. You used the word tinker, that's okay. Um, and then you, and his question was, we feed income. Well, I do what we say we're going to do and what are we saying we're going to do? Let me give you a taste of what we intend to do. I don't come to workplace relations with an us versus them mentality. I understand that for every employee, there's got to be an employer turning a dollar. I get that. But so do most employees, so does every employee. But I also understand behind every successful business, there's a whole lot of employees who've done a fair bit of work too. But we're all in this together. My view of workplace relations isn't one of great litigation and conflict. Sometimes you disagree, you do. My view is very basic. And when I was a union rep, this is the sort of credo I followed. I'd say to employers, treat employees the way you would like another employer to treat a member of your family. That doesn't mean they don't go to work, that doesn't mean they scive off, that doesn't mean they don't follow direction. But industrial relations is not as complex as some of the hard heads say it is. It's about treating people with respect and decency. But unfortunately, the pendulum has swung too far against the decent treatment of employees in too many cases. This isn't fiction. It isn't polemic politics. These are, these are facts. When workers negotiate an enterprise agreement, what now happens in hundreds of cases is that the end of the agreement, and during for that agreement, they'll have negotiated a wage rise, changed their work practices, everyone gets a win. But what happens at the end of the agreement now is the employer has the right to terminate the agreement and take you back to the award. At the enterprise agreement, there'd be, probably been several of them, most workplaces, are well ahead of the award generally. So what we now have is a legal system, which even though workers have, in good faith, negotiated changes for their wage rises, they have to come up with new stuff every enterprise agreement to justify the wages they're already getting. They've already paid for those wage rises in the previous agreement. So we are going to make it illegal for an employer to terminate an agreement at the end of the agreement to coerce people into accepting wage cuts. Instead, what we say is the existing arrangements in workplaces remain until a new instrument or a new agreement is negotiated. That's a strong change. But an even stronger change, and Zaki has been right at us to do this, is labor hire. You know, once upon a time, labor hire was for specialist work. You'd come into a business. Now we have one of the most casualised economies in the world. One in every three Australian workers is either on a contract, casual, you know, or labor hire. The problem with labor hire is you could have two people wearing the same uniform, doing the same work of the same classification, same skill, but they get paid two different wages. And what happens there is that's legal because one person works for the labor hire company and the other is the direct employee. Go on, ask the depot workers down at the local council, the humble old council. You know, the problem with labor hire is that it undercuts the job security of permanent workers. Labor hire workers, there'll be people tonight in Bundy waiting for a text message to find out if they're working tomorrow. Bit like grape pickers out of a John Steinbeck novel of the nineteen thirties. A day hire, you know, we sort of laugh when we see in America the minibus is picking up the, the workers, the Mexican workers in LA to go to work each day if they have a job. Our labor hires, now they're a good labor hire companies, don't get me wrong. But there's a long tail. And you look at the casualisation, that's what's happening. And the reason why this is important is because we've seen a slight improvement in the job market. But when that happens, the theory is that as the labor market tightens, fewer workers, more jobs, wages go up. But that system is partially broken now. And this is why the government's been scratching their head. They said, oh, wages are still a problem. We're at record lows or near record lows. It's because the second-class job market is soaking up many of the new jobs. They have no bargaining power. So what we're seeing is growth without, job growth without wages growth. And that has an impact on the high street of Australia. Because if people are having to dip into their household savings to pay the bills, they're not able to take the family out for breakfast on a Sunday morning the way they might want to. Some of the little perks tighten up. You know, you take one week at the caravan park, not two, you know. Some of the very well-off members, they don't get this. But people are doing it hard. If you don't earn a hundred thousand dollars a year, you know, every dollar counts. You don't have spare money. Imagine, you know, you're people who rent. Oh, you've got to pay your rent, you pay your power bills, you pay the food bills. There're not a lot of joy left. So when this government and some of the conservatives scratch their head and say, oh, how can Labor's message to tackle the wage system, you know, that's wrong, it's, it's, well, it's not wrong. You can't be a government of the nation without a wages policy. So we've said on labor hire, same job, same pay. Bang. That fixes that problem, doesn't it? Then people get employed and companies get employed based upon their productivity, on the cleanliness of their uniforms, on the skill, you know, on their, whatever. But we're not seeing a race to the bottom in wages. And this is the fundamental, one of the fundamental differences coming up this year. We've seen economic growth, but the benefits not equally shared. We're seeing corporate profits up, fine with that. We're not seeing wages move in the same dimension. We need to go back to having a wages policy. We've got a better income tax policy. Did you know that the government's offering you a five-hundred-dollar tax cut or tax refund if you earn up to ninety thousand dollars? We're going to up your nine-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars a year because we've made these other decisions. You know, if you're a family, say mum and dad are working, someone's working in aged care, everyone's working in a business or a bit of construction, whatever, you may earn. One person earns ninety, the other earns sixty. Under a Labor government in our first three years, we're giving you a tax refund, each person of nearly a thousand dollars. And that's great for small business. And that's great for the community because if you earn sixty thousand dollars a year, you ain't negatively gearing your fifth investment property. You're paying the kids' book, you know, school books return to cost. So if we can get a little bit more cash in the pockets of ten million working Aussies, that volume of cash, that volume of pay will build confidence again. And once you've got a bit of confidence and a bit of hope, then the world's your oyster, isn't it? So we will do these things. Plenty of other measures I could mention, but apprenticeships is probably the second last one I mentioned. I want you to think that your kids and your grandkids can get an apprenticeship in this country. I want to bring tradespeople back to this country. But our number-one measure we'll do, and I'll conclude on this point, we're just going to legislate to reverse the arbitrary penalty rate cuts for the hospitality and tourism industry.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll take three more questions and then Bill, Zach, Richard and myself round. And the gentleman in the corner here will do you first.
Did that answer your question?
Hi, Bill, Shane Emson Bagara. Question I'd like to ask is, I think through the 80s, 90s and early 2000s, Australia had a very strong international presence and were quite revered with the position that we took through Asia. And I'm interested, if you're elected as Prime Minister, what your approach is to our international standing in Australia, like Justin Trudeau in Canada, he's doing it very successfully, what's our plan for Australia to reclaim that ground we've lost?
Good question.
Hi, Bill. I can't stand up. My name is Paul Dixon, I reside at Northern Village, which is a wood hill. I have it from good information that I have a son named Simon, who's a care person, was not in prison at the start, although in my 90th year, I am here, not present, with all the animals, but I think it's a story I want to hear and her imagination. This is a group of black women, creaking in home care and all their material right and fall off. The staff we have are good, but they are falling down physically, they never finish their shifts on time, and there is no paid overtime.
Yeah, good on you. I don't mind if we give him a go, mate. She's not a muffin, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, yeah, sorry, my name's Norm. I'm full-time carer for my little brother, he's autistic, but my family, a couple of my family members look after his accounts and do things like that. And they're complaining that since the MDIS kicked in, it seems like everything's gone up in price. I think someone's getting very rich on the MDIS, so, any plans that, I know you're going to review it, but you're going to smack some people around, please?
Just to everyone that wants to speak to me, I'm not rushing off, okay, so I'll be here. But I also know that, you know, my mum used to take me to church, we'd sit up in the back row, and I'd say to mum, why are we going to the Polish mass? Because it was the Polish mass, the rest were in English. She said it was the quickest mass so we could go home, anyway. So I will talk to people, I don't outweigh the welcome of everyone else. A question on foreign policy, I want Australian foreign policy to speak with an Australian accent. Now, that's a nice soundbite, but what I mean by it is this, Australia can't change the world, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be leaders in our region. Now, if you look to the international dateline, you look north through the equator, you look to the Indian Ocean, Indonesia, Papua New Guinea, the islands, the rest of the world expects us to be a good citizen in these regions. So I am going to make sure that we have better relations with the Pacific Islands. I am going to make sure that we engage with PNG, I am going to make sure that we engage with Indonesia. I want us to do things with New Zealand. You know, I've been thinking, I spend a lot of time, I suppose now I turn 50, got kids, I wonder what world it'll be in 25 and 50 years' time. And I want to make sure that our world is secure. I think one of the best things we can do for the security of Australia is invest in our region. Now, some people say, oh, don't worry about what happens off Australia, just worry about here, of course I worry about here, that's my number one priority. But the world is an unusual and tricky and unpredictable place. I think the more that we can be a good citizen in our region, the better we go. When we look further afield, North Asia is crucial to our economic development, from the LNG to the coal to markets for what we do. We absolutely need to engage there. America is a cornerstone of our security alliance, but that doesn't therefore mean that we've got to pick every argument between the Americans and the Chinese, we've got to think for ourselves and identify our own interests. And of course, in doing that, you'll find that part of my foreign policy will be maintaining a strong defence force, because that also is important. But what I want to do also is be a good citizen when it comes to matters like climate change. You know, I think we're actually a middle power. We shouldn't be arrogant about that, but I think the Australian story's a good story. Not many countries in the world got a healthcare system. We have got an egalitarian frame of mind. You know, well, politicians can get pretty nasty, but at least we're arguing about the ill-air board shorts to citizenship ceremonies, in some countries, that wouldn't be the debate, it'd be much more serious of nature. So I want us to think for ourselves, I want us to have a strong defence profile, I want us to be engaged and conscientious citizens in the region around us, I want to make sure that we constantly engage with Asia as an economic opportunity, but I also want to make sure we retain our ties to the United States. Some people say, how will you deal with different world leaders if you get elected? Easy, I'll be professional and polite. And what I will always identify, though, what is Australia's national interest first. And part of our bolder identity I put to you is this, when we have world leaders come and visit, we toast their president. Now, I know up here there'll be plenty of monarchs, but I just say to you, at some point, aren't we due for a debate about having an Australian head of state? That was a big set of questions you raised about the aged care facilities, high care, the treatment of staff. There's a Royal Commission underway, this is a good thing. I know that when we bounced the ball on this, the government rushed out and accused me of elder abuse, I thought, talk about shoot the messenger. So I think that's going to be pretty informative and I'm quite supportive of that, and I, you know, I acknowledge the government did that and where they've got our full support. But we already know some of the issues, and I want to go to three of them. If you don't spend enough money on aged care, if you don't ensure there's adequate staffing numbers, and if you don't have proper quality inspection of facilities so you can catch the ruts, you will have to have a Royal Commission on a regular basis. So we're looking at how we make room in our budget, we want to be able to keep people at home, getting the aged care packages, we want to make sure that there's not a waiting list for people for high care needs, we've got to find more money for that. I want to make sure that the staff got better paid, and we've got some strategies on that for work value cases. And I also want to make sure that the quality agencies actually have some teeth. So we're very interested in any individual experiences that you bring to the table here, the Royal Commission will be important. I want to make some other comment about aged care, which wasn't strictly in the question, but it goes to the heart of a big challenge. How many people here know someone, either in their own family or know a family where someone's being diagnosed with a dementia? Just to show our hands. Keep your hands up for a second, I'm telling you, have a look at this room, these are big issues. So when the gov, thank you very much, I mean, again, that's 80% of the room. When I've done these town halls, I've learnt a lot, and one of the things I've learnt, not only about disability, but about dementia, there's 422,000 Australians diagnosed with dementia. I don't know about you, but dementia scares me. And for families who've got someone living with dementia, it's a really tough business. We've got to find room in our budget for earlier diagnosis, because the earlier you're diagnosed, the more you can help people live with dementia. I did, Alzheimer's Australia got this virtual reality goggles, they're not flattering to look at, but they give you a view of someone with quite an advanced dementia, what life is like. Scariest three minutes I've done in a long time. So I just wanted to say to you, aged care has been a sleeper issue in Australian politics, but this dementia is bloody scary. The numbers, the growth, the impact on families, I think there's a lot more we can do. And so when we have these debates about politics and how we fund things, having seen what dementia does, I've got to find money to help deal with that, rather than just let us muddle along, because the problem's not going away. And for any family who's got a loved one with it, jeez, you're doing it, you know, good on you, but I want to help give you a bit of reinforcement because it's very stressful. And there was one last question, wasn't there, Norm? Oh, NDIS, yeah, we will get that back on track. We've got to put people with disabilities at the centre, we want to get back on track. No, we've said on NBN, listen, I'll finish up on NBN, because NBN, I'm very frustrated, I always thought that at least Turnbull would be good on technology because of his business background, but he gave us a second-class technology and stuff like this, you know. Could you have imagined Bradfield, who did the Sydney Harbour Bridge, building a one-lane bridge over the harbour? But that's what these geniuses have given us for the equivalent for NBN, it's obsolete before it's rolled out, 5G's going to pick the eyes out of the lucrative part of the business, we don't know what sort of mess we're going to inherit, and they're ducking and weaving in government right now about what the true state of the numbers are. We've said there's got to be new service obligations, I'm personally aware of a Bundaberg business, had an outage for five days, couldn't take FPOS. How do you do business? Giving us a third-world technology in a first-world country, but at least that's the government, a bunch of economic geniuses, as they would tell you. Thanks very much, everybody.
As I mentioned, Bill, Zach and Richard and myself will be sticking around, and I just wanted to introduce Richard Pascoe, the Labour candidate for Hinkler, to give a vote of thanks. Thanks, Richard.
Just in closing tonight, I just want to take this time, firstly, Bill, thank you very much, Chloe, thank you very much for your time coming up here to Bundaberg. Clearly, there is an interest in what is happening in Bundaberg and what's going to change. Bill, this is your second town hall meeting in the last two years in Bundaberg. Now, I may have mentioned this, we recently had a big blue bus come up the Bruce Highway, it totally bypassed Hinkler, totally forgot about Hinkler, and it was completely empty. So were the promises that came out for Hinkler at the same time. And yet, yet today, Bill, you came to town, there was an announcement made for 15.7 million for a new mental health facility here in Bundaberg in the Wide Bay area. There's very clear, and it really is, a very clear choice at this upcoming election. Tonight, we had questions ranging from employment, industrial relations, we had questions about live export, a number of questions that came up about disability and care arrangements, through to unemployment, the cashless debit card, aged care, which is a massive issue around the Bundaberg area as well. And yet, Bill, and the Labor team were able to stand up here and clearly articulate and outline where Labor's going for this country. So it's absolutely fantastic to stand up here as the candidate for Hinkler and say, as part of the Labor government, we do have a positive way forward for the members here in Hinkler, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you over the next few months leading up to the election. But Bill and Chloe, a very big thank you for your time, Zach, Anthony, thank you for your time as well, it's greatly appreciated.
So in response, thanks, Richard, you can tell he'll do a good job, doesn't take anything to grant it. You're very good, you're very patient, all good things should come to an end, some of you might argue that was a few minutes ago. The, I just want to put this last proposition in your minds, I do not expect that everything I've said all of you will agree with. But I did say at the outset, I hope you have a better sense of how I answer my questions, how I try and think things through, and if we agree, we'll agree, and if we don't agree, we won't agree, and I can respect why you're saying it, and I'll always listen, and I want you to hear that we thought through what we do. But what I can promise you is that for me, Australia is not just Melbourne, Sydney and Brisbane. I've been coming here a lot, and I'll keep coming here if I get elected Prime Minister. Hinkler is a harder seat to win than perhaps even Flynn up the road. But for me, when I come here, and why I did get off the bus in Bundaberg, is I don't look at Australia or Queensland as LNP or Labor, I see Queenslanders, I see Australians. It's about time we had some stability, it's about time that wages got moving again in this country, it's about time the middle and working class people had a bigger say in the direction of this nation, because I trust them to call it right every time. Thank you very much.